Moment of silence, public service announcements, and a comment from Susan Brogan regarding the Pan Mass Challenge. At 6:35, we will begin a public hearing regarding allocating the local property tax levy. We have a town administrator's update, department reports from DPW and Water and Sewer. Consideration and possible action to confirm the appointment of Kerry Kirby as a full-time dispatcher. Consideration and possible action to confirm the appointment of Devin Kingman as a full-time police officer. Consideration and possible action to confirm the appointment of Officer Paul Jansen to the position of sergeant. Consideration and possible action on dock permit for Ronald Peterson at 243 Big Alum in Sturbridge. Consideration and possible action on the use of Chapter 90 funds for the annual paving program. Consideration and possible action on a transient vendor application for David Brockman. Consideration and possible action to accept a letter of resignation from Tricia Towns. Consideration and possible action to accept a letter of resignation from Trevor Brice. Consideration and possible action to accept two donations to the Sturbridge Police Department. Consideration and possible action to accept the resignation of Constantine Economos as a part-time custodian. Consideration and possible action on the appointment of Chase Walker as a part-time custodian. Consideration and possible action on the appointment of Brian Merrill as a part-time custodian. Consideration and possible action authorize a chair to execute an MOA with Mastha in the town of Sturbridge. Old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens' form, and adjourn. And with that, I would like everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. With that, I'd like to take a moment of silence for really everybody in Hawaii and Southern California today. It's been an absolute brutal situation. All right. Our thoughts and prayers are with them. All right, public service announcements. Mary Lou?
No, nothing.
All right. Mary Dowen?
I just have one. A couple of weeks ago, I thanked everybody involved with the 5K Special Events Race held in conjunction with the Festival of Giving Trees. And I said I would have the figure for the amount of money that was raised. And $7,000 was raised, more than 200 runners for breast cancer research at Harrington and another, two other research nonprofits for cancer. So $7,000. Festival of Giving Trees Committee was thrilled with Sturbridge and the help from the police department. And they are eager to do it again next summer. And Special Events feels the same way. So it was really a great event. Yep.
Mary, can I just?
Nothing, thank you.
Great. And I would just like to announce that pumpkins are coming to the Sturbridge Veterated Church on September 23rd, 2023. The pumpkin patch will run towards October 31st. So it's a lovely, as everybody knows, it can't help but go by. So please buy your pumpkins from the church. And then we have an update on the Pan Mass Challenge. For Susan.
Thank you so much for having me. I know you have a very full agenda. And your people are all busy, so I won't keep you very long. But my name is Sue Brogan. I'm originally from Sturbridge. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Pan Mass Challenge. My partner and I, Dr. Matt McGinnis, run the Sturbridge hub site. I also do the lodging for all of the Pan Mass and a lot of other things that nobody else really feels like doing.
And for years, you've been doing.
Yes, I've been with the Pan Mass now for a lot of years. So let's leave it at that. My hair was very brown when I started. I just, this is one of the things that I look forward to, is thanking the people of Sturbridge as a whole, especially public service. Chief Dessert, Lieutenant Bateman, Lieutenant Labadi. The bus drivers from the town of Sturbridge come and volunteer, shuttle our riders from outlaying hotels to the start. They're wonderful. They don't get lost. They keep everybody calm. I just actually received the results today from the rider surveys. And 2,638 riders responded to the survey in Sturbridge and gave us a 91% rating. A lot of that is due to the good work done by the people that were sitting behind me. I always, they make everyone feel safe, but they also make everyone feel very welcome. We also have a number of volunteers from the area. Mary is a good example of that. She stands there for hours folding T-shirts. And it's not a lot of glory, but it is a wonderful experience. The town of Sturbridge, out of the 47 towns that we deal with, is without doubt the easiest to deal with and the most efficient. Robin, I called about a mold problem in one of the local hotels. She returned my call, gave me her cell. It was, still, I guess, hasn't been resolved. But knowing that you have somebody that you can call and say, hey, is this for real? Or, you know, what's going on, really makes a big difference as an organizer. Welcome to, I know you have a very full agenda and people want to celebrate some appointments, so I won't belabor the point, but does anybody have any questions or?
I just have a comment to thank you for coming in because, you know, given what we do, and it's to be expected if a resident has a concern or, you know, complaint, we hear that, but we don't often hear when somebody is happy that you took time out of your schedule to come in too. So I want to thank you for that.
It's the work, especially that Lieutenant Bateman put in. I mean, he coordinates all of Central Mass with the Pan Mass, with CMEC. And I don't even know the names of the organizations anymore because I don't have to. It's just absolutely a pure joy. It allows Matt and I to do the work that we really need to do. And they keep us safe. And it's just been a wonderful partnership. So thank you all very much. And we'll be back August 2nd. Is the Friday in Sturbridge next year. So everybody stay away from the Mass Pike from 12:00.
That's a day. And I know you thanked everybody, but also CERT, which I know falls into the police department, because I have a good friend on CERT. They get up at, you know, 3:00 in the morning to be there, helping with the travel. So I don't think all residents realize just what kind of time commitment, though, in the middle of the night, you know? Nobody's up, except my husband gets up at 5:00. Don't ask, 4:00, don't ask me why. But, you know, those volunteers, right, Chief Dessert? That's a big commitment.
The work of the CERT has every year gotten better and better. And they just have been so helpful. And again, it goes back to the leadership of these three men who are right here. They've really engaged the whole community. And Robin, I can't thank you enough. It's just, it is truly a pleasure. I won't say that I don't thank other towns, because I do. But this is absolutely heartfelt. And a 91% rating from over 2,600 riders tell you that it's not just a small core of people. They're enjoying their whole experience here, with the exception of a few hotels, but we won't get into that now. But thank you very much. And thank you, Mary, for bringing up CERT.
I don't want to interrupt you, but I think the most important thank you goes to you. And your commitment to this is remarkable. And I'd just like everybody to.
I will tell you, though, to celebrate, that we have a $70 million goal this year. On Thursday, we received, Thursday before the Pan Mass, we received a $1 million gift from Rob Hale from Granite Communications, who made his first trip out to Sturbridge for the Pan Mass and enjoyed his time immensely. So he gave us $1 million. So we will indeed make our $70 million.
One of the biggest ones you've gotten.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Excuse me. You said you worked with Dr. McGinnis?
Sorry?
Dr. McGinnis, you mentioned. Is he from?
Dr. McGinnis is my co-pilot.
Is he from Sturbridge?
Sorry?
Is he from Sturbridge?
He is from Sturbridge. His dad is Steve McGinnis.
Yeah, I know. Well, I had Matt in school.
Class of '99, the class of '99 from Tantascwa is the backbone of Sturbridge operations. And Matt is.
Oh, he's awesome. That whole family is his brother and his mother and father.
They're just, there's none better. I wouldn't do it without him.
I don't know about that. The 2001 class is pretty good. And I think the town party would have some opinions as well, but there's other.
How I feel ancient. So thank you, Sue.
All right. We're moving on to a public hearing. We're a little late for it, but.
It can be late, but you can be early.
That's true. All right. So we need the.
Notice? Oh, sorry. I do.
We don't publish this one?
We don't have to publish.
I guess.
Because it's, well, you can just.
Yeah, just leave one there. Yeah.
Okay. We were holding a public hearing, 6:35 PM, Town Hall, regarding the allocation of the local property tax levy amount, establishing the classes of real property and personal property for fiscal year 2024.
If I could just jump in very quickly. I'd like to thank Ann and our Board of Assessors. This was done quickly, early. The earlier this gets done, the easier it is for finance. Ann just does yeoman's work on this. And I just want to say thank you. Just tremendous work from her office.
Could they introduce themselves for the audience at home?
I'm Ann Murphy. I'm the principal assessor.
Paul Murphy, no known relation. Chair of Board of Assessors.
Maura McRath.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Where would you like to begin?
Yep. So we're here to present the Fiscal 2024 Classification Hearing for the allocating of the tax rate. The Board of Selectmen will be voting on four different issues tonight. One is the selection of the SIP factor. And SIP stands for Commercial, Industrial, and Personal Property. They will be voting on open space discount, residential exemption, and a small commercial exemption. In this presentation, the Fiscal 2024 Tax Rate is proposed because it has not been certified by the Department of Revenue. But it says close to what we think it's going to be. So from last year to this year, values based on the market did increase on a range from 15% to 20% across the board. With that being said, the tax rate is going down $1.57. An average home in Sturbridge is around the middle example that I gave, about $433,000. So an average house in Sturbridge from last year to this year will see an increase of about $416 in taxes. When you're voting on the SIP factor, that's shifting the tax burden. And it involves the Board of Selectmen to adopt a single tax rate with a factor of one or adopt a split tax rate for a lower residential factor. Of the 351 communities in Massachusetts, 148 of them have a higher SIP value than Sturbridge. The higher the SIP value makes it more feasible to apply a split tax rate. 108 communities had a split tax rate in Fiscal 23. Of those 108, 98 of them had a higher SIP factor than Sturbridge. So the current tax rate for Fiscal 23 was 1807. The proposed tax rate for 24 is 1650. If the Board goes with a split rate of 1.05, it would lower the residential tax rate to 1635 and increase the commercial, industrial, and personal property tax rate to 1732. And the other example is that a 1.10% split lowers it again to 1621 and raises the SIP to 1815. So if they were to do, if you were to do a split, a residential property valued at $437,387, because that's the average right now. If you had a single rate, they would both pay $7,216.89 in taxes. If you do a split rate of the 1.05, the residential properties will see a decrease of $65. And the commercial and industrial and personal properties will see an increase of $358. If you go with a split rate of 1.10, the residential's will see a decrease of $131. And the commercial, industrial, and personal property will see an increase of $721. So the impact of split tax rates. It reduces taxes for residential and open space properties, but it increases the taxes for mixed-use, commercial, industrial properties and for taxpayers required to pay a personal property tax. Personal property tax is a second tax that commercial properties usually pay. Or not, not always. The commercial properties may be owned by somebody else. So that person might be paying the residential tax and, or the real estate tax, and then the business is paying a personal property tax. But in a lot of cases in Sturbridge, it's the owner of the business that's paying the real estate tax, and he's also paying a personal property tax. We have 4,261 residential and open space properties. We have 799 commercial, industrial, and personal properties. So those are the things to consider if you're going to go with a single or a split tax rate. The next item is the open space discount. An open space discount, you can have a shift up to 25% for all property that is classified as open space. The exemption is borne by the residential classes only, and it will increase the residential tax rate without affecting the commercial, industrial, or personal property taxes. All of our open space properties are currently chapter land properties. So they are already receiving values that are assessed at 25% of their fair market. The additional discount would really not benefit Sturbridge or the taxpayer. For an example of that, 10-acre parcel that is in full fair cash value is being taxed $577.50 for 10 acres. The same property in Chapter 61 Forestry Program, those 10 acres would only be $14.19 in taxes. Property in Chapter 61A, which is a farmland, those taxes are paying $33 for 10 acres of land. And the 61B recreational is discounted at 25%. So that 10 acres of land would be $144.38. Those taxes are before any type of exemption that you could give them. The next item is the residential discount. The Board of Selectmen can grant up to a 35% discount to owner-occupied residential properties. This excludes any vacant residential land, any seasonal or second homes, and any residential properties that are not occupied by the primary residence. So rental homes, apartments, mixed use, things like that. The overall impact is to the overall residential class, and it shifts the burden from the qualified properties onto the unqualified properties. With that in mind, in addition to the properties mentioned above, some principal resident owners with higher values would also pay more as the residential tax rate would be higher. If you went with a full 35% tax impact, the exemption would be $132,467. That amount would be deducted from the current value of a qualified property. The tax rate estimated at 1650 would go up to 2247 if you were to adopt the 35% rate. Example of that, a qualified property and an unqualified property would be paying $7,216.89. If you adopt the exemption, a qualified property would see a decrease of $365.34 in their taxes. However, an unqualified property would see an increase of $2,611.20 in their taxes. If we go with a lesser exemption, say 15%, the exemption would be $56,771. The tax rate would go from 1650 to 1880, just for the residential properties. Qualified and unqualified property, both starting off at $7,216.89 in taxes, the qualified property would see a decrease of $61.31 in taxes. The unqualified property would see $1,005.99 in taxes. By adopting a residential exemption, 2,299 properties would see a decrease in the real estate taxes. 2,167 properties would see an increase in real estate taxes. So it's almost a 50-50 split. And the last item that you would vote on is a small commercial exemption. You may decide to exempt up to 10% of the value of a commercial property that qualify. Small commercial exemptions lowers taxes on properties occupied by small businesses and shifts those taxes to the other commercial and industrial taxpayers. Only commercial properties are eligible. Properties must be occupied by the business as of January 1st of 2023. It does not have to be owner-occupied. No more than 10 employees at all locations during the previous calendar year. And the property must have a valuation of less than $1 million. If a property has multiple commercial occupants, all the occupants must be eligible businesses in order to receive the exemption. So approximately 53 out of the 244 businesses on the list sent to Sturbridge by the Department of Labor and Workforce Development may qualify for this exemption. Total valuation is approximately $28,586,800. A 10% shift would increase the commercial, industrial, personal property tax rate by 23 cents. So there's an example of the small business exemption. Business A qualifies, business B does not qualify. Starting off at the single rate, they would both pay the same amount in taxes, $13,333.65. The one that qualifies gets the $80,810 exemption, and then it would decrease their taxes by $1,166.09. Business B that does not qualify, their taxes would increase by $185.86. The impact of the small commercial exemption is that only the commercial properties can qualify, but the industrial class must share the burden. And it's the owner of the property, rather than the business occupying the site, that receives the tax benefit. So that business, if they didn't own the property, they don't pay real estate tax, but I'm sure there's, they're paying it in one way or the other. But they're also still paying that personal property tax, which that increases by the 23 cents as well. Commercial properties account for 9.46% of our levy. And the industrial properties account for 2.10% of the levy. I didn't put the personal property down. They're at 5.67% of the levy. Any sole proprietorship or partnership that did not appear on the certified list can apply directly to the assessor's office. And the assessors would make the determination whether it met the criterion for the previous calendar year. Those are the four items that you will vote on. The Board recommends voting to adopt a single tax rate. The Board of Assessors also votes not to adopt the open space discount, not to adopt the residential exemption, and not to adopt the small commercial exemption. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Ann.
Questions from the Board? Comments?
This has been your recommendation for many years now. So I assume all the same reasons as in the past.
Yeah.
But I think it does bear repeating. On the residential exemption, our retirement community, which is a number of occupants of lesser economic means, would be adversely impacted, correct?
They would. The funny thing is, they would qualify for the exemption, but because of their value, their taxes will go up.
Right.
Yeah. So it impacts them hugely. And I believe, I had my notes, I believe their taxes would go up about $30,000. Ballpark figure. Yeah.
That's always my incentive for not, because it looks attractive when you first see it as a way of helping out residents who are of lesser means. But if you look at it a little further, it really doesn't.
Exactly. And Sturbridge, really, the percentage of levy doesn't change that much year to year. It's a high residential percentage of the levy. So to do the split tax rate and shift that burden onto 799 business properties, you run the risk of losing those businesses because they're going to, they're going to support 4,000-some-odd properties over here when you do a split rate. It's the commercial properties that get impacted as well.
Hey, Ian, what is the split roughly between residential amount paid compared to the industrial, commercial?
The SIP pays 15% of the levy. Yeah. So out of the whole levy of all the taxes that are collected, 15% of that is the commercial, industrial, and personal property. Commercial is just 2.9%.
Yeah, I saw that.
So it's a very small percentage, you know?
The real way to shift that is to bring more small businesses and appropriate businesses in as opposed to the split rate, which then discourages.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah. Because the towns that do a split rate, like I said, 108 of them had a split rate last year. 98 had a higher SIP than Sturbridge. I was looking at those few that were lower SIPs. Those are the ones on the Cape. You know, Turo, Wellfleet, all those, they did a split rate. But they have a lot of seasonal homes. So those seasonal homes, you know, there's all different nuances there. So for the most part, you see the ones that do the split rate, they have at least a 30% business, commercial, industrial portion of the levy. It's usually 30% or higher before they would do a split. We're at 15%.
Yeah. Not close.
Do that, you know?
So I know values went up considerably. You said 15 to 20%.
15 to 20%.
Enabling the rate to go down. But the net of it all is, I think the median house is going about $400 for fiscal year 24. That was going to be my question. Is that a little less than 23, or is it the same?
It's almost the same. Yep, it's almost the same. Because values last year went up about 12% to 18%. But it's not the values that set the increase in the taxes, it's the budget. So if, if values plummeted tomorrow and the town voted to spend more money than they did last year, your taxes are going up, that you're, you just lost $300,000 in value in your property, but your taxes still went up because the budget. It's whatever's voted on to spend, that's what sets the tax rate, not the value. The value is just that figure that they divide in to find out what the tax rate has to be. But the budget sets how much money we have to raise. So this is the amount of money we have to raise. Now it's just the math, the equation of this is our value. What do we have to tax the value to make that budget? So unless, the only time taxes go down is if the budget goes down or if a debt exclusion that was on the budget pays off and goes off, then you'll see a drop.
I know it's the discussion for another night. But again, for many years, we did offset our taxes with, with a warrant article.
Sometimes we did that.
From years. Really, only in the last three years did we stop doing that. And again.
Last year.
Last year, we did not.
We didn't?
No. And I.
I thought we did.
Going to continue to advocate that we go back to that because we're holding on to more than even what our fiscal policy required. But I know that's not for today. But I am getting a lot of concern from residents that they can't afford to live in Sturbridge anymore. And that's why I asked, did it go up a little less? But last year was $400, and the year before that. I mean, this year, it's $400. So now we're at $800. And especially older people feel as though they're getting not able to afford their house anymore, which is sad. And we've got to.
And again, the value of the house is, is based on DOR requirements. We have to be within 10% of fair market value. The market is, it's a seller's market. But again, it's the budget that sets how much your taxes are going up. Because if your value went up and the budget went down, your taxes would go down. So it's, you know, it's all based on that budget is what's, is what's driving the taxes, not your value. The value is just what's numbers being used to.
Right. But from a property owner's perspective, they'd much rather have a high value at a low rate than a high rate at a low value. That's common sense.
Because if the market drops, you lose all that equity in your home.
Right.
Okay, so you're better off to keep the high value and the low tax rate. You know? I mean, a $1.57 in a drop is good because last year, we only had a drop of a dollar. I think it was just about a dollar, $1.2. So we had even a bigger drop. So that must mean that we spent a little less money. You know, we spent more money, but not as much as we did the year before. You know?
So any other comments, questions, thoughts, concerns? All right. So we have four different.
Public hearing?
Oh, right. It is a public hearing. I'm duly reminded. Does anybody have a comment? You have to, you have to come up and identify yourself for the mic, please. Just one right there?
Oh, no. 227 properties.
I'm sending you some. How many nonprofits are there in town?
I can't break it down as to nonprofit, but I can tell you how many exempt, taxable exempt properties. There's 227. That includes town-owned properties, state-owned properties.
And approach about contributing?
Well, we have...
I know.
Old Sturbridge Village is a pilot program in lieu of taxes.
Yes, yes, they do.
They already have one. They contribute and they increase it.
Yes. Yeah.
Go on once. All right.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, so we have four different items here, probably makes sense to break them out that way. So we have selection of a SIP factor. Do we have a motion or any discussion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve SIP factor of one. Second.
All those in favor? Great, the ayes have it. Moving on to the open space discount, do we have a motion or any further discussion?
I make a motion that we not approve the open space discount. Second.
All those in favor? All right, moving on to item three, residential exemption. Do we have a motion or discussion?
I make a motion that we not approve the residential exemption. Second.
All those in favor? All right, and moving on to small commercial exemption, do we have a motion or any further discussion?
I make a motion that we not approve the small commercial exemption.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ian.
We appreciate all the hard work, I know it isn't easy.
Laura, thanks for your time.
I remind him of signing.
This is still what you guys are supposed to do.
I know. I still have to look.
Just sign.
Blank. Yeah, I put that in there.
Oh, my goodness. All right, thank you.
I sign a lot, Mary. I sign a lot.
Teach you.
All right. I'm going to do things a little out of order with apologies to Robyn, Shane, and Heather, but we do have some littler folks here tonight, so I'm gonna skip to action item A, which is consideration and possible action to confirm the appointment of Carrie Kirby. Kirby has a full-time dispatcher for the Sturbridge Police Department effective August 28, 2023, with the hourly rate of 2828 and the benefits of a three-year employee minus longevity.
Good evening, thank you. Tonight I present to you Ms. Carrie Kirby.
Thank you, Ian.
We're very fortunate to have her apply to the Sturbridge Police Communications Center. She comes to us with five years of experience dispatching and has all the certifications she needs, and we're excited, that doesn't happen with us very often. She's also currently pursuing her bachelor's degree in emergency services and homeland security through Post University, and it is my, we've completed all the necessary checks on her, and it's my recommendation she be appointed as a full-time dispatcher effective August 28, 2023, with hourly rate of 2828 and the benefits of a three-year employee minus longevity.
All right, any questions from the board?
Just, why do you want to come to Sturbridge?
Sturbridge is a great town. I actually moved to Stafford Springs, so my commute's a little long right now, but I really love Sturbridge. It's a good town.
It's not a bad... And good people.
Yes, I know a couple of people that work here, and they have nothing but good things to say.
Glad to hear it. All right, well, do we have a motion then? I'll make a motion to confirm the appointment of Carrie Kirby as a full-time dispatcher for the Sturbridge Police Department effective August 28, 2023, with the hourly rate of $28.28 and the benefits of a three-year employee minus longevity.
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Chief, I think we've got another one of yours.
Two more, a whole lineup tonight.
All right, so consideration, and we're going on to action item B, consideration and possible action to confirm the appointment of Devon Kingman as a full-time police officer with the Sturbridge Police Department effective August 28, 2023, with the hourly rate of 2925. This appointment is contingent upon Mr. Kingman successfully completing all phases of the hiring process, and that he successfully graduates the Massachusetts Police Training Council Recruit Officer Course.
Okay, I'm excited to bring Mr. Kingman in front of you tonight. Mr. Kingman is a Sturbridge resident and a Tantascal graduate. He holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a minor in, with two minors, and one in psychology and one in sociology from Westfield State University. While Mr. Kingman was attending college, he did an internship with the Sturbridge Police Department, and while he was doing internship, he was recognized by myself and the members of the command staff that he would be an outstanding police officer. Given the fact that he's from town, he did an internship with us, I think it's a great appointment. So I, we have to do this a little off the normal, because normally we have all the stuff done, but in order to get him registered for the police academy, he has to be hired. So we gotta take some other steps, that's why I'm bringing him here. We're almost done with everything, and I don't see any issues at this point. So I recommend appointing Devon Kingman as a full-time police officer effective August 28, 2023, with hourly rate of 2925. I recommend this appointment be contingent that Mr. Kingman successfully completes all phases of the hiring process, and that he successfully graduates from the Minnesota Police Training Committee's Recruit Officer Course, which is October 16th in Holyoke, Mass.
Great. Any questions, comments from the board?
So I'll make a motion then to confirm the appointment of Devon Kingman as a full-time police officer with the Sturbridge Police Department effective August 28, 2023, with the hourly rate of $29.25. This appointment is contingent upon Mr. Kingman successfully completing all phases of the hiring process, and that he successfully graduates Massachusetts Police Training Council Recruit Officer Course. The second, Ed?
All those in favor? The ayes have it.
I have one question. Congratulations. I remember when you were running around at those softball games.
Is this another student?
No, I had... Congratulations. I had his brother Aaron.
Welcome aboard, thank you.
Congratulations.
The roll service is a little later than that class of 99 you were talking.
I think so. Okay, we are on to action item C, consideration and possible action to confirm the appointment of Officer Paul Jansen to the position of sergeant effective August 22, 2023, at the hourly rate of 3762.
Another exciting appointment here. This will be Sturbridge's fourth sergeant, a new position that was funded at the annual town meeting, and as a result of that, we recently conducted a comprehensive and promotional process for the position of sergeant. This hiring process included a written component and an assessment center that we hired outside company, Charette Consulting LLC to put on. In addition, there was an oral interview of the candidates with myself, Captain Justin Gilbert of the Yukon Police Department, and Chief Scott Trombley of the Hampden Police Department. And lastly, the top two candidates were interviewed by Town Administrator Robin Grim. As a result of this process, Officer Paul Jansen finished as the top candidate. Officer Jansen resides in Sturbridge, and he's been a valuable member of the Sturbridge Police Department since December of 2015. Officer Jansen holds a master's degree in criminal justice from Nichols College in counterterrorism. He is also a captain, currently a captain in the Army National Guard. Officer Jansen has a very, has had a very productive career with the Sturbridge Police Department, and I'm confident he will make a great sergeant. With great pride, I recommend Officer Jansen be appointed to the position of sergeant effective August 22, 2023, at the hourly rate of 3762 per hour.
Do we have any questions, comments from the board?
I'll second.
Make a motion to confirm the appointment of Officer Paul Jansen to the position of sergeant effective August 22, 2023, at the hourly rate of $37.62.
A second.
All right, all those in favor? The ayes have it.
He's actually gonna be pinned here by his wife Jenna and his son Lucas, who's very excited to get out of here.
Tax classification, didn't do it for the kids.
He was angry about the single rate.
Yeah, he wanted a split.
I know Mrs. Jansen's sitting there, would you like a picture as well?
No.
Thank you very much, have a wonderful...
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, everybody, congratulations again. All right, so we're gonna jump back up to the top of the list now that, let's see, our most vocal critic is... Robyn, I think we're at you with the town administrator update?
Yeah, and so the only thing I have, I believe you have a memorandum from me on this, and Shane and Heather are here, who can sort of fill us in a little bit more on this. I'm not necessarily sure that the board will want to vote on this tonight, you may want to think about this. We're also looking, I have an email to KP Law right now, to try to determine if there's any written history on these E1 pumps. But what we have is, the memo's pretty...
Hold on a second. Hey, guys, I appreciate it all, but can we just keep it, keep it going in the hallway so we can hear Robyn?
You don't want to hear me. Nobody wants to hear this, this is boring, this is E1 sewer pumps. So the challenge we face is that at one point, the town agreed that it would put these pumps in and maintain it. There's nothing that was really, that we can find written that says, for how long, forever, were we always responsible to replace them? Are we responsible into perpetuity to replace them? And the problem that's happening is that this is about over 20 years ago, these pumps are failing, the parts really are not available anymore, are so expensive to repair them, that now we have to replace them. The power systems to them have to be upgraded, the panels have to be upgraded, so it's getting very expensive. And they're all, of course, beginning to go, a lot of them went in about 20 years ago. This year alone, we've installed 53 new pumps, we didn't budget for that many, we budgeted for some, but it's extraordinarily expensive, because we, it did go up 5%, and now we also have found out that we have to do full replacements on most of these. You see the numbers that I gave you, what the cost would be, about $278,000 if we did these next year, and each year coming up. So there are a couple of things we have to look at. Do we want to continue to repair these? What do we want to do? How do we phase out a program if we want to phase it out? And as I said, I am still trying to dig through Jonathan Eichman I emailed today to find out if there's any written history of, was this supposed to be just simply while we gave the loans, were we gonna be responsible to repair them until they were paid off? We cannot find any documentation of why we do this, other than we've always done it this way. There are a couple of options that I put on this memo, and you have a couple, which is to continue to do, but it's gonna increase the sewer budget accordingly. Why this is problematic is that of the 2,147 accounts, 68% do not have E1 pumps. So 68% of the people are basically funding the other 30-some-odd percent, and you may all think that's fine, but that's really, it's a policy decision, it's not something I can make a call on that. We could immediately cease the system, understanding that the homeowner needs to take responsibility. And just as a point, homeowners are responsible, for example, for the laterals from the street to their home, once it's from the sidewalk to the home, it is the homeowner's responsibility. So we have a precedent that anything, you know, sort of at your house, or from the sidewalk in, is yours, not the...
Well, they do have also, Robyn, the responsibility, if they cause any problem with the pump...
Yes, if they damage the pump, they're responsible. Or the other thing you could do is implement a fee on the E1 users to at least help offset the cost, even if it's not the whole cost of it, do help at least ease the burden a little bit on the other 68%. So those are just some, that's a suggestion that I put out there, if there's sort of a compromise that you want to look at, or a halfway point. I don't know that you necessarily have to take a vote tonight, I wanted you to have the option to, but it needs to be on the radar, and we definitely need to have this discussion, because $280,000 a year for the next several years with increases of 5% is gonna kill the sewer account. We've already had to raise rates dramatically, and if it was on every ratepayer that had this expense, you'd say, well, that's a cost to do in business, no question, if you want sewers, that's what you have. The question is, you know, this isn't the responsibility of every ratepayer. I know there's a lot of debate, because, you know, some developments as time went on were required to put pump stations in, to stop this from having to keep happening. If they have, if they're on pump station, they don't need this. The other problem is, when these fail, we have to go out and immediately take care of the situation. So if you have a massive fail, it becomes a huge burden on our system as well, and it's our response. Now, even if it fails and they're paying, we still gonna have to get out there, we can't let these things fail. But the cost of this is becoming somewhat prohibitive.
So I have a few just background questions, just to make sure I understand it correctly. So generally, places in town that are serviced by the pump stations are less likely to have these?
Right, they will not have an E1 if they have a pump station.
Yeah, so you have, you have an E1 pump on a particular set of, a particular property, because that property is not, for whatever reason, gonna, the water's not gonna pump up the hill from the pump station.
Right.
So, and what is the, and, because here's my, I think that the 68%, it's complicated, right? Because if the, is it, and I guess this is probably more a question for Shane, but it's the, is the pump station, is the user who's getting an E1 being serviced by the pump station and the E1? Does that make sense, Shane? Because it's like, because it, you know, you need, is the E1 the extra energy?
So if you, if the, if the house, depending on, you know, where it's located, can be blow by gravity, like you said, then it doesn't have a pump. And the pumps were here when I got here, but I believe, and you probably, I think the lakes were the first place to get them, and there's just no way, when the house is down here and the road's up here, that you're gonna be able to do that without a pump.
Sure.
So I think the lakes were the first places to get pumps. Then other developments put pumps in, too, and eventually we made it so that if it's possible for it to be serviced by gravity, then we make the builders do that instead of putting in these E1 pumps, because obviously, you just can't, you don't want to put them in everywhere, because we've already got a big enough cost associated with the ones we have now.
Sure.
So that's basically how it works, yes. And, so the lakes, will their pumps go to a pump station, and in that pump station, either pumps it to another one, or it pumps it to the wastewater treatment plant?
It's not an either-or, of course, so the 68% aren't paying, let's say, I know what you're getting at, are they paying for the pump station, and the other people are paying for the E1s? The E1 people are using the pump stations and the E1s.
Well, I guess, I guess my question more is, and I don't want to dominate the conversation here, but my question more is, it's like, I don't, it doesn't in my head neatly work as if like, that 68% all of a sudden is one side or the other side of the whole system, because I, even just what you explained on the lake, it sounds like it's, depending on where you are in town, it's more complicated. But I do have another question in that, where, so is there a part of town that this is particularly concentrated in? Are there parts of town that got more updated pumps recently and other ones don't? It's okay if you know that.
They're all over town, okay? And they're in different spots. So no, I mean, it's not like we're always at one place, I mean, they're just getting to the age where, you know, some of these pumps were put in 20 years ago, they've probably already been fully rebuilt once, and now they're coming back again, and the manufacturer's saying, it's not worth rebuilding it again, you need to start buying new pumps and putting them out in the system, which is what we've started doing, we've actually got 98 new ones out there. So now that we know the ones coming back can't be rebuilt, or it's gonna cost just as much, if not more, to rebuild them than just to buy a new one, you're gonna have to start allocating money, about 100 pumps a year, and those are, and that's the numbers, that's where she came up with the numbers that she's telling you, that you'll have to buy 100 new pumps a year, because that's about how many we change, and in order to do that, that's how much you're gonna have to increase the budget by.
And it's 100 new pumps a year, how, for forever?
No, no, so, right, eventually you're gonna change them all, because you have about 682 that we believe, right now, there's 682 out in the system. So, no, but the, they can be rebuilt, all right? That's number one, as they start to come back. And what we're noticing with the new ones is, they're coming back a lot faster, they're coming back... They're coming back in five, six years. So those, when they start to come back, can be rebuilt. It's just, right now, the ones that are coming back, it's just going to cost you more money to rebuild them than it is just buy a new pump and put it in.
But there will always be repair and rebuilds.
Right.
Yeah, no, I get it. But if you're going from the 20, so, but that's, you're, basically, you're telling us that we're going from, the older pumps would last 20-odd years or something like that. And now it's too expensive to fix those pumps. But conversely, the new pumps turn around, but their fail rate is five to 10 years, we're looking at?
That's what we believe, yes. And then you have to keep in mind too, it's not just the pump, right? You've got the panels that are becoming outdated because they're 20 years old. And then the cords that run from the panel to the E1 itself. So...
So are the panels also, are they, I mean, are they, are they specific to these pumps? Or are they just, so you have to buy the panels as well?
Right. So you can ask, so there's adapters. So what we've been doing is we've been buying new pumps and using, you know, we want to use what we can, right? So we buy adapters and we adapt them to the older panels. My point is, what we're finding is we stuck into these panels that a lot of them are not working properly because they're 20 years old and everything, and they're starting to corrode. Which, you know, 20 years on an electrical panel that's outside, and I'll be honest with you, some of them were put in places they shouldn't have been put. They're below the snow lines, and when it snows, and they get over there, the water gets into them, and they're starting to corrode. Other things that we're finding, sometimes the panel's not working. The alarm's not going off properly, the light's not going off properly, and the person doesn't know that they have a problem until it starts to back up into their house. So there's also a liability issue. Who's liable when that happens? So, I mean, that's, that's where you're at, right? I mean, this, in my personal opinion is, if you didn't have them in around the lakes, the lakes wouldn't be as clean as they are. I mean, it's clear as day, right?
Well, that's, that's what sold them, to clean lakes. Because this has come up before, so I do want to disclose that my property is one with a pump. And I think I looked into ethics 15, 20 years ago because it involves so many neighborhoods and people that you can, but I'm going to look into that again before I make any vote. But I just want to provide a little bit of history. When these pumps were put in, and I don't even think I was on the board at the time, the town did in re, hold out that they belonged to the town. And as Mary indicated, absent, you know, negligence on the part of the homeowner, which I think in the past, if people were putting things in that pump, we have held the homeowner responsible when it's due to their own malfeasance, if you will. Okay? But absent that, those pumps were put in and voted upon in reasonable reliance with what the town was telling homeowners. So I think that's going to be a big hurdle to get beyond. They were put in saying, the town owns them, the town will maintain them, the town will repair them. So, and people voted for, and neighborhoods like the lakes, voted for town sewer in reliance on the town's representations. So I think that we have, you know, a real problem there. And now, because it's expensive, the town wants to say, sorry, we're going to put it on the homeowner. I think if you try to do it prospectively with any new pumps going in, that's a different story because now those homeowners won't be told, the cost is on the town, the cost is on you, and then they can make a well-reasoned, informed decision as to whether they want to go on town services. But when we built the new wastewater treatment plant, there was a big push for neighborhoods to get on the system. There's a lot of cul-de-sacs that I can think of that were put on Woodside Circle, Cedar Lake. Walker Pond voted it down at a town meeting.
They did.
And, and we were told, okay, it's going to clean up Cedar. And I don't know how to respond to residents who come forward, who are told, sorry, the town's no longer going to do it because it's just too expensive for us. So I, I have that issue.
But I almost, well, that's all very fair, Mary, but I think we're a little ahead of that part of the conversation.
Well, I don't know.
Because in my head, I'm almost diagnostically thinking about what the scale of the spend is. How does it relate to the larger sewer budget? Are there any other ways to do it with any other pumping station actions? Is there?
Well, when the E1 pumps were put in, the town went through a lot of research, and they found out the E1s were the best. And it was to preserve the lakes. And it was a tough sell. I mean, people had to be convinced, and I think for the town to go back on that promise is atrocious. There are some people who have the E1s and have resold their house, and those people have the same guarantee. Now with the E1 pumps, I mean, the people who have them pay the electricity on them. So it's not, you know, cut blanch. But I have a major problem with the town reneging. I think, I think Viola can come up with a plan and budget a little bit better so that we're not hit boom, boom, boom.
Well, you're predicting, you were kind of predicting where I was going with this, Mary, which is, I can't, this, this is every six months with this budget, right now. We're at a large water and sewer spends right now at every four or five. And it's not, it's not anything you're doing, Shane. It's just the circumstance of the, it's just the markets and everything's been crazy.
On everything.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't mean that as a critical comment by any stretch. But it is like, these, set, you're, this is a, we're talking 200,000 over five to six years. It's a $1.2 million spend. This is totally separate from the rest of it. And I get it, running water and sewer is expensive. But I just, I need to see this within, what's the rest of the year look like? Whereas, because the residents of Sturbridge, one way or the other, are paying for this. It's just who, what part, and how is it divvied up? So that's kind of where I'm, what I'm thinking, guys. Mary, do you have a, because you haven't, do you have anything?
No, just...
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
We're not, we're not, at least I'm not, and I don't think these two are, we're not here saying that, telling you that, you know, they should just take them over. We're telling you that we've got to start coming up with...
I don't think, I don't think anybody...
And I understand exactly, and obviously, they've been on this board a very long time. They know the history. I've been here a long, long time. I know the history. So I'm not saying it should go back on the homeowners. What we're trying to say is, we're at the point now where we just can't rebuild the pumps.
No, no, Shane, we're not killing the messenger. We, Robin's first point was, it's a policy decision and it's set for the board. And we understand the point. It's just that it's...
No, I understand. It's not cheap.
And I do think Jamie brings up a good point. We're, we're running into a situation at this point where it's, there are large asks that are going to be coming from the sewer system. The things that we are finding out there in the sewer system are not anything on Viola. There, this is a maintenance and this is a cost of doing business issue. Of the costs of running a sewer plant have gone up dramatically, more than the cost of just what general, you know, the cost on utilities is even more higher than just our general cost as consumers. And that's one thing that we see all the time. There's a lack of having parts and availability of parts. It is even worse than even trying to buy new cars. So we're, you know, we tried to find a pump to replace a simple chemical feed pump, and it took six weeks to get it. It's, it's just something that manufacturing is not happening anymore. And the cost of what we're seeing, we, I've come into this, and I'm starting to look around, we see big asks coming up in the sewer department. So this is just, this is the easy ask because we know whatever our history is. We have last 10 years of history. We know we've already replaced 900 pumps or worked on 900 pumps since 2015. So this isn't something that's going away. We only see this getting worse, and that's why we want to bring it up. It's more of to kind of start informing you guys of this, that, what we're having. We see degradation in our concrete at the wastewater treatment plant. We're going to have major needs to do coatings and rehab there. The plant's only 10 years old, but what we have is that need. It's not brand new anymore. Our infrastructure of our sewer pipes, we know we have a major project that's going to have to go on in Route 20. We have repairs on 131. It's just the tip of the iceberg, unfortunately. All of this is all related, sewer is related. We know that the E1s have contributed to that degradation and some of that because of the septicness of the waste that we get. It's different when you pump an E1 versus having a gravity system. We're in it. We're going to have to operate it. We have to seriously think of a policy decision of going forward, who we're going to just let connect and whether, whose responsibility is, absolutely. And, you know, me personally, we've put in some newer subdivisions and allowed septic, loud pump systems on them when there should never have been pump systems. So we need to think of a policy decision going forward from a planning standpoint, too, that E1s are not always the answer. And we need to think about very selectively, they work great around the lakes. They probably are the right answer. But they are definitely coming with operational concerns 20 years down the road. And 20 years is about the life of whatever you're going to get in a wastewater situation. That is, I don't know what they sold you on 20 years ago, but we have other, that is pretty normal.
Well, this isn't the answer for tonight.
No.
Mary can go first. She was just commenting.
Okay, I just want to say, and I don't have a solution for this, but when we put the size wastewater treatment plant in that we did, we contemplated more people to get on board. And that's how it was sold to residents at town meetings, that size plant. And we kind of dropped the ball on that. And also, maybe some residents don't want to do it anymore because it is expensive. But it's a chicken and egg. So that wastewater treatment plant size contemplated more neighborhoods being on town services. And we don't have that. And that's the biggest, that is the biggest thing. And, you know...
We need more customers.
You know, that, but again, you know, neighborhoods are not going to want to do it now because there is a cost, and they're not going to want to be encouraged, certainly to put in these pumps if the town goes and says, we're not, you know, so it's, it's a very related problem. But that, that is why, because it's a big wastewater treatment plant, and we're nowhere near capacity. Nowhere near. So that was a decision maybe 10 years ago, maybe we should have put in a smaller one. At R, or we should have gotten the neighborhoods in that we thought we were going to get in. And I don't know who works on that, our town administrator, or does that fall on DPW? I don't know who it falls on. But there hasn't been an initiative to bring in a new neighborhood to the wastewater treatment plant in years.
And I think, Mary, you have a comment as well?
I forgot what it was.
Oh, sorry.
No, I remember now. As far as records, Robin, there has to be records.
That's what we're trying to find, what exactly was voted on.
There were votes by the selectmen, there were town meeting votes.
That's what we're trying to find, exactly. What was promised, because the question, and the concept of prospectively is an important one to look at. So do we want to say, or can we down the road say, it doesn't go with the sale of the home, for example? So whoever owns the home in the current timeframe gets the pump, whoever, we can't go back 20 years, but whoever sits in that home now, even if it's flipped a few times. But going forward, if it's sold, the responsibility then changes. I don't know about the logistics of that, but, you know, in a sales agreement, for example, it doesn't go with a new homeowner. It just, there may be ways to at least try to ease the burden of it. But I think that there's going to be a lot to, we just need to put it on your radar.
Yeah, it's on the radar. It's the radar. But I'm sorry, you know, I'm not too sure what the written policy, it's not in our policy book. But I do know that homeowners were told and believed that the town would maintain them.
And we stressed it. Right, but that's why I'm saying if we want to make a change.
For a month, for 10 years or anything. So everything was voted on that premise.
But what I question is, maybe, can you make a change going forward when the house is sold?
Well, be that as it may, listen, there's, there's, listen, guys, let's, let's, let's keep it. Right now, we don't have enough information, ladies. We don't have enough information for it. We have a larger numerical problem of what water and sewer are going to be costing for the next year, two years, three years, four years, five years. And that, until you have that particular conversation, we are just kind of engaging here. Because we might do X within a budget of Y, and we might do Z with a budget of A. I agree with what both Marys have said about the representations of the town. I agree that we want to keep the lakes clean, especially with additional populations there. These are not, it isn't, and then frankly, and it's not a problem particularly intimidated by, except when you commit to a course and then you find out, oh, you're wrong about this. It's XYZ there. So this is, let's get a little more global on it. Why don't you guys talk? I don't know if anybody else has anything else to talk about on it, but... Sure.
I can, we can repair them. They've been repaired. What we're saying is now it's a full rebuild, and what the manufacturer has said, and it's in writing, that to rebuild a pump is going to cost more than to buy a new one. And then there are ones that come back that can't be rebuilt. Because you have to understand, these pumps sit in a very, very corrosive environment. And when they come out, some of them, the metal's just no good anymore. It's past its use.
Yeah, so for the record, we received a memo stating that, that what the cost between the pump, the rebuilding of the pump... So this isn't, first of all, we're not, if you want to comment on here, I will allow you to, but you have to come and say your name. This is not a public hearing, but so, but you can come up and... Well, that's, well... Well, be that as it may, the requisitions law and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts don't work quite that way. And we also don't have open, we don't have back and forth like this. No, it's okay. So the, but to the point is, just for the record, the cost of rebuilding these pumps has, and the time or the ability to get parts over the delay has greatly eclipsed the cost of just purchasing new ones. But then going back to the point earlier in the conversations, that the new ones don't last as long. And so then we have a conversation whether or not this is a mixed approach. And I don't think we have enough information to make a decision. And I don't think we'd want to do it without the full board anyways.
I have a question, though. You said that you found that these pumps weren't placed in the proper locations?
Not the pumps, he was talking about the panels. So every, every pump station has its own panel that's located outside.
Is there any way, when you replace those pumps, you can relocate the panels?
When we replace a panel, which we have to pay a licensed electrician to do, yes, we make sure they're up out of the snow line.
Who placed these panels to start with?
The contractor that you hired.
The contract that the town hired?
Correct.
Not the individual homeowners?
Correct.
Okay, well...
And that's something that we now, in recent years, we're sticklers about where the panels go and how high they have to be off the ground for this reason because we know what happens when they go into the snow line.
In a lot of cases, I would think you would probably have found some of the homeowners asked for them to probably be placed there because they didn't want to look at it.
Aesthetics.
And then the other issue is, when we have power outages, people that have town water, they still got water coming into their house. Like your house, if the power goes out, the water's still going to come in your house. But your sewer pump's not going to run. And if it stays that way for a long time, it can ruin the pump. We've seen that, too.
You mean because it's empty and pulling without water?
It's just, water just keeps coming in.
Oh, yeah, it's flooding it.
But I've noticed in recent years, when we're out on the lakes at night or during the day when there's no power, most people have generators. So that's a huge help. You know, people have generators. I think that's a lot, not, not everybody has them, but the people that do, it's definitely a help.
Why does the water come in? I didn't follow that.
If you have town water, the water's still going to come into your house. But if you have a well, there's not, no electricity to bring the water into your home. Unless you have a generator. But then it's running both systems.
Yeah, so people that do have E1 systems do need to be very careful, careful when power goes out to know whether you have power to your pumps still and if you're using water or wastewater. And it's also very important that we just educate that, yes.
Well, you're not supposed to use it at all if you don't...
Well, like, you could use it because...
Oh, I don't.
But, right.
I would advise not to.
Right, if you don't have power, you shouldn't be using it, right. Is exactly what we should say. And in addition, I think it's important that people, if they hear that alarm, don't just shut it off. Please call immediately because that alarm is saying that there's something wrong. And I, I feel like everybody's like, well, we should know that. That's not totally, not happening. We've had even commercial properties shut the alarm off or disconnect it, so.
Okay.
That was a happy update from the town administrator today. Usually I'm light and fluffy.
Do you have anything else, Robin?
No, I'm done. That's, that's my hurrah for the night.
All right, so Heather, I think you are up next.
Oh, I get to go first, okay.
Well, you're first on the list. Boy, Shane's had enough tortured.
Let me get through all my papers. I have a lot on my plate today for you guys. So first, if you haven't noticed, we've turned into Seattle for getting all their rain. And Shane likes it, and I don't. So a lot of, I'll just quickly go over my monthly reports for the last two months. You'll see that we've done a lot of work on a lot of the private roads. Hans Cooper Road, obviously, I think we all know that had a major washout in the large rainstorm. rainstorm. So we've been doing a lot of catch-up and cleanup work on private roads, and just even our roads in general. And of course, we had a deluge again. So a lot of the work has been that. We're keeping up on trying to get a roadside mower out. I know a lot of people have called, but again, it's been raining so much that it seems like we're in a lush tropical forest now, too, in top of it. So the grass is growing more, the water is super high everywhere, we're having washouts, we do have problems. Please call and tell us if you are having a problem, and you have a washout near your area. We want to get to it, but we can't be everywhere, so we don't have eyes everywhere. It is helpful for us to get the reports in of where there might be an issue, even if it's just clogging and washing around a catch basin. That might prevent a longer-term problem. So we're trying to get everywhere. We are prioritizing based on access and how much damage could be done. So if we don't get to you right away, please understand that we are full out trying to have our staff in multiple places, and based on the most, you know, how dangerous the situation is, we're prioritizing those locations. Is basically what my staff has been doing, I guess, most of the time.
If I could jump in on that, we have one current one that is been a little bit problematic. There's a new construction on New Boston, and there is a concern on that. Heather is working with the building official, with the building inspector right now, as well as conservation, to try to rectify. So some of these private roads are budding, our roads, where there's some new construction. So there are some issues like that as well. So when it's on our road, we do try to address it through staff as best as we can. And then we address what we can by bylaw on the private roads. And so Heather's a little restricted on the private roadside on what she can do by the bylaw. But anything that's caused from the public road onto the private road, we can deal with. And so we have one situation right now, in fact, that we're dealing with. They were out there today, and are going back out tomorrow.
Were there gone just now?
I didn't, are you actually, are the residents from, that was the group I mentioned to you, in fact.
Oh, okay. Well, let's, let Heather finish her report, and then we'll, so Heather can keep going.
Okay, so on to some of the things that I've been more working on. 501 Main Street, I think you've probably seen, they have moved to the site, they're waiting to do, get their conservation clearance with their silt fence and everything, and they should be starting work very soon. The, we had a pre-construction meeting, their only concern was the plantings that have to go into the retention area. There's a limit on how late they can be installed. But I said to them in the meeting, that's going to really depend on what the weather conditions are at that time. If it's something that we're not comfortable, we'll wait and have you do it in the spring. But I don't think we all have a problem. If we can get a opening parking lot, that would be great. The other concerns we have are dealing with National Grid, and dealing with Mass DOT to get our access permit. But they can do a lot of work before those two things have to fully kick in, I guess you can say. We will have to deal with National Grid to get power to the location, so that always can be a little tricky. But they have assured me that they'll work, start that now, so that hopefully, when we are ready for our lights to go on, they're actually able to. So that's kind of good news. Maple Street Water Line has been completed. I know Maple Street is still kind of bumpy, but we're going to let that settle for the next year and next spring. That will be on our list of our paving projects to be completely redone. It's always best when you're doing water lines and major utility work to let those trenches, make sure that any of those spots that might not have got compacted completely, actually settle before you go and repave them, and then have a settling spot in the future. FY24 paving plan is presented later on tonight, but basically, you have a request for, to use Chapter 90 funding on three different roads. Lead Mine, Putnam, and the area of Shepherd's Place, Orchard, and Laurel Hill. So that, that last one will kind of complete our paving operations up there in that area. We're kind of moving out into the 149 area, Putnam being one of the major roads and has some really big settling. And then the Lead Mine area will kind of, also kind of complete what they had started over there. So those are three. We also have, I will say this now, so that, because I know that there's people that knew we were looking at this. We were looking at doing Paradise this year and including it in our project. But when we went to apply for our Chapter 90 funds, which you have the applications I have to put in, it is not considered a town-accepted road. So we are right now going through the, trying to find historical paperwork for when that was accepted, and make sure that it was accepted properly. And then we have to go through a process to get it included in the Chapter 90 funding before we can use Chapter 90 funds to do any work on that road. So that's going to be delayed a little bit, because that process isn't instantaneous, and there's still, there's definitely going to be some questions of whether it actually was accepted properly, and it may have to come up for another town meeting vote and another process to go through if we can't find the right paperwork to support that it was actually accepted properly. One of those steps, and the reason why I'm concerned, is that it's supposed to be recorded as a town-accepted road, and I can't find that recording. So if that wasn't done, that's one of those major, like, when it was transferred from the private developer to the town, that's all supposed to have a recording, and I, at this point, haven't found that. Usually, that's a plan that's also recorded with it, and I don't have that. I have the subdivision plan, but I don't have the recording in the transfer, in the registry of deeds.
Recording with the registry of deeds, I assume?
Yes.
That's kind of a big deal.
Yes, it is.
It's kind of like the legal big deal. That's why it may actually have to go for a new vote at town meeting, and then restart that process. I don't know if we drop the ball on recording our attorneys. I mean.
It's going to be really hard for us to find out.
But I mean, that's the first thing you do, is record these things.
It's happened, it happened a fair amount of years ago. So we're hoping we can find the vote, let's find that, and march forward from there, and see if we can find the paperwork. But it is definitely something, I've already started, asked the clerk's office to start assisting me in finding the votes, so that we can go that way. I just started to look in the registry, since I know how to start doing that research on my own by listing the road. I was hoping I was going to find it, and it was going to be like, okay, yeah, here it is, and here, this should, the vote should be around this time, you know, and be able to kind of help out. But so far, we haven't found it, so. So it's going to, just for the residents up there, it's going to delay that work on what we all thought was a town-accepted road? Because I can't, I don't have the funding. It's a fair amount of money to, you know, we don't have it just in our regular road construction fund to go and do it. So I think, other than that, we put some various, Cooper Road I mentioned, I really do want to give a shout out to my guys, because they did a really good job in getting that repair done, even through some unexpectedness. Originally, we thought the main culvert was going to be fine, and that we were just going to kind of put it back together. But when we started excavating, it was pretty apparent that that culvert bottom was gone, it had failed. So we had to scramble and find a replacement culvert, and worked with the Conservation Commission, and Becky was really great with, okay, we had to change our plans a little, and we're going to try to do this on our own. And they did a really good job. We are currently getting bids to pave that section, so it will be repaved. But right now, we felt like, since it was passable, we wanted to get it open and let the residents start using it again, so.
I just wanted to comment, because I like to run in that road. I was very impressed with how quickly it happened. And I had a lot of questions for residents, because they like to use Cooper.
Yes.
When they're going to Arnold or Cedar. So I thought that was a really good job.
Yeah, and I, and I do, I know people are like, why did it take as long as it did? At first, we were trying to, we had to go through the whole FEMA process and kind of make sure that we weren't going to be classified as a FEMA federal emergency, because it would have changed the way that we had to document everything, even, like, as far as the money and the costs and stuff like that, there's different rules once we start into that FEMA that we would have had to follow. So we didn't know which way we were going to go at first, and we kind of waited a couple weeks for FEMA to get back to us. And then as soon as we did that, originally, we thought we might need to bring in outside sources, so we did an emergency procurement. It turned out that, once we started it, it went better than I expected, and we didn't need outside help. We actually were pretty fortunate that it went relatively smoothly, we were able to do it with our own staff. It meant, luckily, it stopped raining for long enough that we could actually dedicate, I had to dedicate about half my staff to, on that project, which is a major, you know, that's a lot of staffing for me to be on one project at a time for a week. But it worked out, and we were able to get it done and get it open.
And very reasonably.
And very reasonably, so.
Very good.
So you know, when you indicated the roads that you want to have paved?
Yep.
What's the process that you use to determine which roads will be paved? Do you rate them? Do you go out and drive around? Like, what exactly is?
So we do.
Because I've had this question asked of me, you know, why did this road get done and not another one? So I just wondered, what is the formal process that's utilized?
So right now, I am following the process that was set up before I was here, where we have a ranking of all the roadways in town, that basically says what the condition index is for every single one of the roads. So we are using that process, where somebody has gone around and rated every road, right?
And what is it rated, from what to what?
It's rated on a scale of 100, and like, the higher the score, the better, the better the rating of the road. And it also, with those rating scores, you actually look at what type of condition and treatment you should be doing. So sometimes, we do a mill and overlay, because the road is just starting to get, it's not really bad yet, but it's starting to show deterioration. In other cases, like most of the roads in this year's project, are full reconstructions, because they have gotten to a point where what we call cupping, or they have like that divot in the middle where they've sunk and subsided, or the general condition of the road is so bad in different locations that you know you just can't mill and overlay it, you're going to be right down to gravel if you did that, which isn't a good situation to get in. So there's various different things, so we look at what kind of contract we're going to put in. Also, a lot, you can see, I kind of concentrated by areas. You want to kind of do one area all in the same couple of years, and then move on to another area to try to localize what you're working on. So now this neighborhood is done, like I said, now Shepherd Road area will be completed when we finish these roads. Same thing with the Lead Mine area, the roads have been done up in that area in the last couple of years. So we'll move on. So that's kind of how we are selecting roads going on. I will need to do a new pavement management study. It's something that we do and you update, it's an ongoing thing. You want to go through and write, you want to go through and have them all ranked again, so that you can see if what you call your deterioration curve is actually holding, because they project what, how it's going to deteriorate, and where you should be concentrating your money. And to get, to keep all the roads in the best overall condition of the town that you can.
So two questions. The roads that are going to be done, were they rated like 50, like, at what point?
I wouldn't even, I'd have to go back.
And number two, can residents find out what their road is rated? Where would they find that out?
I think the pavement management study was up on the website. It's up on the website.
It was at one point. We can check to be sure.
Yeah, we can check. But it was up on the website.
That's public.
Yeah. And that is, that study, like I said, is five years old, so you can't.
I was going to say that we used to get every so often, five years.
Yeah, it's about every five years, you should redo the ratings. So we'll be looking at redoing that and selecting someone to go out and redo that. Historically, they've used CMRPC, which is the local, which is a very affordable way to do it. I have seen it done some other ways that I might be more beneficial, because it would actually update every time you do a road, so you would actually see how your ratings have increased. So we'll look, we got to look at that coming up for this next round. We can use Chapter 90 money to do it, so it's something that we'll just.
And residents also need to understand that sometimes you're looking at, the road might rate at a 30, but it might be an extremely long road that would eat up all of our funds. So you might go to something that's a 38, or two or three 35s and 38s, and say, that's a better use of our funds, depending on how many people travel a certain road. So I do question when people look at that and say, well, my road was a 25, but a 35 got done for me.
It's not always just about.
One of the factors must be how much it's used by the public.
And, and like, we, there's other factors that go into it. So we are starting to look at potentially, for the Walker Pond area, potentially bringing water over there, public water over there, because there's some issues with some contamination in wells over there from salt contamination. Shane's shaking his head.
I'm just laughing.
I know.
I know what we went through last time.
And I, and I understand that it's, but we're in the beginning stages. But because we're actually considering it, would mean a reason why I wouldn't want to pave that road.
If we know a road's going to get torn up.
Until we make a decision, yes or no, because if we're going to go dig up a road in the next couple of years, we don't want to be repaving it. So we have to look at the overall, what the long-term factor is. The same would go with water and sewer. If there was a project that we knew, like Maple Street, you know, other project, if there's other roads in town that I might have to dig up for whatever reason to replace the sewer line, to replace the water line, I'm not going to repave that until after that infrastructure's been replaced. So there are sometimes conditions that might be a reason why, okay, we can't do that road, but we want to do this road.
But that's important for people to understand, because people do see that list, and they say, well, my street's rated this, why didn't it get done? And there's always a presumption that there's some nefarious reason.
It's always my street.
Yeah, it's a lot of factors. And by the way, don't wish, Heather and I talked about this today, for everybody who wants their road paved, it means people are going to speed on your road. So if you don't like speeding, I prefer my road never gets paved. I don't ever want a paved road.
Absolutely true.
Because people go slow when they're, when they're bumpy.
I think I just have one more announcement. And it's hard to think about, but winter is coming, so.
Oh.
They're going, no, no. So winter is coming, this is the time of year that it would be really helpful if all the residents that live on private roads in particular, because we do mow back the edges of the public roads, we are out there doing our roadside mowing. But we've been on a lot of these roads recently, and let me tell you, the growth has just been crazy. We need them to cut back for that growth, at least 10, 11 feet up, and two feet back from that natural line, so that we can get in there with our plows, and we aren't damaging our equipment. Because if we do damage equipment, that means downtime, that means your road doesn't get plowed as quick. And at some point, we're just not going to be able to go in there. We're not going in there with your standard car. I know we plow with pickup trucks, but even they get damaged.
We were rubbing the sides today with a pickup.
And we were hitting the branches on the side of the road. If the mirrors get broken, all of that means downtown them in the truck. And we do bring the bigger trucks down those roads to salt and sand them, too. So we need access. It's really important that residents, please, get out there and start trimming back that brush, or in the fall, start trimming back that brush, so that we can get access down those roads.
The drought had its advantages last year. Everything is green.
To bring that back. But we, you're definitely seeing that growth and that problem of that low canopy and that edges of the roads coming in. So whatever they can do to trim back those road edges for us, would be greatly appreciated.
Heather, speaking of the vegetation, I mean, the state's done zero everywhere. I mean, as you mentioned before, jungle. But what about our sidewalks with the sprouts coming up?
So we will be looking at potentially going and doing some, we're working, last So, we will be looking at potentially going and doing some, we're working, last year, we actually had some issues where we had some damage to cars, so it's kind of a problem. I know we're looking into doing the vegetation management plan, that is still in progress. We get comments back, that has to go back to them for full approval. And again, we don't have the staff that can actually do the addition, so that's only on certain streets. So, we can do that. I also will tell you that I've been in contact with Mass DOT to complain about the section median, and I actually spoke to someone, and I said to him, I said, I know we can't go out there when there's lots of cars, but I almost, I volunteered my staff to go out at night with road closures to do it, because I think it looks that bad. If we have to do that, we will do that, it will be much quicker, but he hasn't given me any indication that he's going to allow me to do that. But I, I thought I put it out there, because I, I actually, there was a message on our phone, somebody didn't leave their name or number, so I couldn't call them back, but the center median in Mass DOT, we are not allowed to maintain it, we are not, we used to do it in the past, I was told, but they have asked us not to touch it. We used to do it with a sweeper and try to sweep the dirt away. And I do agree that that section looks horrible, we will be trying to trim back some of our own.
Okay, and what about these beaver grates? How are they doing? I mean, we still have oodles of beavers.
Right, so we do have some locations that we have historical beaver deceivers in, which we do have maintenance agreements on, that somebody comes out and checks them to make sure that they're working. The beavers are a big problem in this town, and, and a lot of towns, I mean, they've made a remarkable comeback, I would say. They're one of those creatures that came back and forth. So, we definitely have some roads that we do regular inspections and maintenance on, and sometimes even that's not enough. So, we have some problem areas, we have some culverts that are impacted because of the beavers and stuff getting clogged into them, that we are probably going to have to go through conservation to have them permitted and made bigger, which is an engineering project that we'll have to do in the future. But, yes, it's, we do regular maintenance on a lot of our beaver grates, they're necessary at some point to keep there, or we would have complete road washouts. Sometimes we pull them to let, to try to get the water through during the day and have to put them back in at night, so we're going twice a day. When it rains heavy, we're there every day.
Thank you.
Anything else for Heather?
I have a question. Do you ever get requests from residents about maintenance to their roads or in front of their houses?
Private roads or public roads?
Public roads.
Um, yes, we, we definitely do. Most of the time, it's because of some type of, like, they have some washout from a berm, like, there's not a berm there, and there might be a small washout, or some erosion. So, we definitely have them, I have a long list of berms that need to be, places that need to be looked at or installed. But like I'm saying, there's a priority list. Somebody's yard that's getting slightly washed out and causing some landscaping issue versus a road that's not passable, I have to prioritize. So, we have a list, and I know some people probably feel like they've been on our list forever. Some of it also is some roads in town that I have to have police details to be able to do the work, and I'm not always readily able to get those details, so it's a scheduling issue. It's not that we don't have them on the list, and if they want to call and make sure that they're still on the list, I welcome that, we do have a new operations manager, so some things can get lost in translation from one list to another, but we're trying to get around. It's not been easy. It's not been easy, to tell you the truth, so.
Okay.
I have a question for the evening. The Mass DOT project in front of Yankee Ped.
Oh, I should mention that, sorry. So, yes, I actually do, thank you, because I meant to say something, because we did get an email, I know, I shared it with Robyn. They are coming back the week of August 28th, right in time for school to start. They told us that they're going to be mobbing on site, and they'll be setting up their mobilization of their more limited lands to start their work again. They have had some conversations with us about having a shutdown overnight, and they're hoping that it would just be one night period, so that they could get across the road much quicker, and shorting the timeframe of the construction.
We did meet with the.
This project is just ridiculous.
And the shutdown is sort of ancillary to the project, it's more like what we had with Cooper, less dramatic, but a result of the water and the fact that that problem still isn't fixed. So, back to the original problem, basically. So, the shutdown, though, we did have a meeting, we, we met with police and fire to ensure safety that evening, and routes, and the best ways for trucks to go.
Timing.
Timing of day, and what day of the week. So, the shutdown will only be one night, I want to be clear that the construction is going to go back to regular construction. The shutdown is a matter of about eight hours, I think, we figured.
Shutdowns for the flooding from Cooper during this.
Well, it's, the shutdown, so, if you know how the project's going, they're putting in a culvert, and they're kind of, the culvert currently is going in the same direction as the roadway, it has to turn and go across the roadway. If they did that during the day with the way they have to stagger the traffic, they, well, if they did all that work, it would take a period of like, three months. If, if they can get further across, so they can get to the other side and reroute traffic into the one, so that you, they can keep the two-way traffic, and not have to work in the middle, which is very limited space, and they have to, it shortens their construction timeframe.
But it was exacerbated through the last storms, and they.
So, they've had more problems, you've seen them down there, what we'll term on more of an emergency basis, patching that area multiple times, where the old culvert is attached to the new culvert is when, during high water, which we've had a lot of, is subject to failure. So, it swirls in there, and it's starting sinkholes, and obviously, they, they want to get this fixed. I agree with you that it's been an astronomical lot of time, and, but, we really don't.
So, the contractor in Mass DOT have settled all their legal differences.
There's a second, there's a new contractor.
Entirely new.
Yes. Interesting. Mass DOT is bringing a totally new contractor in today.
Yeah, there's another question, by the way, but.
I already have now.
No, you're fine. Talk as much as you want to, Mary. Heather, do you have anything else for us?
I probably will come up with something, but no, at this point, I think I'm good.
Heather, do you have anything, Heather? All right, Shane.
So, you have the operation reports for June and July. One of the things I wanted to point out was in late June, we started having issues with CBOD in our effluent, and we continue to have that issue. Normally, we would just turn on the third tank, but the third tank has a broken petition, and Heather and I feel that if we turn that tank on, that petition falls over and hits one of those massive mixes we have, that'll just cause more damage. So, we've done a lot of extra sampling, the Veolia technical group is involved, we've traced it down to what we think might be the reason, and it's the only chemical that wasn't originally part of the original design, it was added to help remove zinc. So, it is an issue, we're working on it, actually, Veolia's flying in some people next week to do some extensive testing. Heather gets updates every week, but it's something you should be aware of, I don't, it's not like, I mean, I permit, the daily max is nine, and the weekly and monthly average is six, we're running around seven or eight. So, and it's, I don't want to get too far into it, but usually, if you can remove, if the bugs are removing your ammonia, they're removing your CBOD. Well, the bugs are removing the ammonia, but the CBOD is not being completely taken out. So, it's got me stumped, it's got the people above me stumped, like I said, we're working on it, I just want to make you aware of that. Well, four, I'm pretty sure you're aware of, the last three years, we paid the chloroengineering to do some study on Hammond Brook, to see what effects the well four plant actually has on that stream. Our engineer came back and said there was no impact, however, Fish and Wildlife came out and worked out there with us for a year, and we worked with them, and they seem to think there is an impact. I think me and Heather are on the same page there, so we're in negotiations with them on what they want to do. They want to, they want us to do certain things, we don't think the town should be responsible for that, we just responded in writing through our engineer, and when we get the comments back from the state, which will basically come from Fish and Wildlife, we'll let you know how that, how that works out. Lead and coppers, we did another round of lead and copper samples. I've gotten all 20 into the lab, I only have 18 results, but so far, we've had no detects on lead, and copper limits are very, very low, so. And that goes back to whoever put the corrosion control system back in 1982, it works fantastic. So, we don't have lead and copper issues. And I got to do the schools again, but I can't do those until they're in session, so we'll be doing those in September, and once I have those results, I'll report those back to you also. We won't be in a water ban anytime soon, I can assure you, I was looking at the levels today. And honestly, I've been here 17 years, I haven't seen the water table since I started working here, so it's bad for her, but it's good for me, so, there's that. We've GPS'd most of the gate valves in the water system, and now, we're going to, we just got the stuff created recently, we're going to move out and start doing all the E1s in town, and then off of them, E1s, we can start tagging when we change the pump, when we change the panel, so we can actually get you a better history as things go along. So, we're working on that also. The PFOS testing, I told you that we were going to come do that on the wastewater plant, I'd have that for when I came back, and we did do it on the influent, the effluent, the sludge, there was some hits, however, there are no limits right now. Actually, what was coming in versus what was going out was quite different, kind of puzzling, but I don't want to watch, the testing has some questions, let's put it that way, and I think until we do a bunch more rounds, we're not going to know what we're actually looking at. And we have to do it every quarter, so we've done one quarter, we have those results, we'll do another one in October, and all I can do is just keep back reporting what we find. Again, there's no limits.
No, no, I understand that. Would the amount of water we've had, had any, have any impact on that? Would it, would it be possible that it'd be draining it out? Because, I mean, it's raining so much.
So, one of the good things about your sewer system is you don't have a lot of I and I, in other words, the pipes for the most part, except on Route 20 where we got to reline it, are in pretty good shape, and we've been repairing them as we find them, and we're in year three now. So, where your water comes from, and this is, again, something you'll have to decide, at some point, you're going to have to come up with an illegal stump pump policy, because it's clear as day where the water's coming from, and we're finding it when we're out there looking for the defects in the pipe, it's not a conversation for tonight. I can see it, I can see it at the meter, at the South Bridge line, when, you know, you have a dry month, you're doing 600,000, when you have a wet month, you're doing 2 million. And when our guys are out there, the old guys are looking for those pipes, they can see the clear water coming down, coming down the pipe, so, again, that's a conversation for another night. So, to answer your question, no, I don't believe so.
Okay. Anything else for you?
No, no questions on that.
Mary?
All right. I think we're going to do something, one more time out of order. I understand some people care about some issues on New Boston Road, and I'm going to do the citizens forum now, so if anybody can just come up and announce their name to the microphone and give the street they live on.
I'll see them all.
Thanks.
Shane, Heather.
Thank you, Shane.
Hi, I'm from opposite side of the line, Adams Road, number 25. Several people here are members of the same road, not everyone could be here where they would be tonight, because we feel the situation has reached the point where we need to implore you folks for some assistance or guidance and remedy the problems.
What road, I'm sorry?
It's Adams Road.
Oh, okay, I know where Adams is, okay.
It's right on the corner, the property that we feel like is causing the local problems, 53 New Boston Road, and it blocks Adams Road.
So, as Heather was talking about, some of the runoff that we're getting is from New Boston, the water that's coming, I know you know this, but I'm telling them, coming right off of New Boston Road, but a lot of the problem is a result of the new construction project on 53 New Boston. What happened was, it was vacant land, so obviously, it handled the water runoff differently, but what sets this property apart from other properties that create these kinds of issues is that there's a drainage swale on the property that is, that was allegedly put in place to handle the water runoff from the preserve subdivision. So, you have all of that water and pollutants coming off of the preserve, going under the culvert, under New Boston Road, and then it's supposed to hit this swale drainage. Obviously, the one in place worked, because some of these people here lived on the road for 40, 50 years, and it worked for decades without a major problem and washout of the road. But the way it was rebuilt, first of all, when the builder excavated the land prior to getting all of his order of conditions permits, he rebuilt it not to spec. I did a lot of the legal, legal research, and I have the deeds and plans of the original swale neasement and how it was supposed to be installed, with the information on the deed that it was prohibited from being altered from the original plans. Subsequently, or at the onset of the project, conservation instituted an order of conditions, and if, I went through them, and he violated multiple ones. And one of the, one of the paragraph 12 specifically states, work shall be halted on the site if an agent of the serbage conservation is aware that he's not in compliance. He was never halted, this project's been going on almost two years. So, the road's been slowly deteriorating, and obviously, this year, with the extra abundance of rain we've been having, it is now gouged, I mean, to the point of almost being impassable in some places. And the other problem from a conscom point is that all that pollutant water that's coming off of the preserve used to filter through, go into a culvert, two properties, this one and the one behind, get into a culvert that ultimately ends up in the lake. But there was a filtration process that took out some of the harmful pollutants. Now, what's going on is, it's not doing that, it's coming down the road, because he built a driveway too, and he, and he shortened the swale by like, 20 feet. He probably took about 20, 80, 100 square feet maybe of the original swale, and changed it, and built a driveway that wasn't on the original site plan.
And who's he?
I'm sorry, the builder.
No, but who's the builder?
The builder was Tom Revane, I was getting to that. Two, two or three weeks ago, the people after two years finally fired him, but he's, he's the one that did this. I honestly, though, I feel bad for the property owners, I don't know if they know all of this, until Nelson maybe told them recently. You know, most homeowners wouldn't know that somebody built their swale wrong, you know what I mean? If the builder didn't tell them, you know. So, now, so now all this runoff pollutant water is coming down New Boston, I mean, excuse me, coming down Adams Road, and it's going into the lake directly. Some of the people here have had water because of this as a direct proximate cause, have had water go into their house and their property. So, my, our concern is that.
No, no, just a question. So, just so I understand the scope of the project that we're dealing with, so what is being built on 53 New Boston? Is it a single house?
Single family house.
So, it's a single-family house, and it's up on a hill, little driveway coming down?
Yeah, it's a little below grade from New Boston.
Okay.
So, if I'm in New Boston, looking at the house, the pitch is slightly downhill, and then Adams Road is here, it has quite a pitch.
Yeah.
And then the swale, the other thing is, Adams Road is a 20-foot right-of-way, it looks like, I was thinking about what you were saying about clearing the side of the road, which we all need to do. It only looks like it's 10 feet in places. Thankfully, I drive an older car, so, but, but I, we're not, we're not completely certain that when the swale was put back into place incorrectly, that he isn't encroaching on the right-of-way, and we all know we can't do that. So, there's things that need to happen. I've, I've had meetings with Nelson and Becky about this, but it's just been a long time, and, and I don't know what to do to get some immediate action. We have elderly people on the road, one of the people couldn't come tonight because they lost a family member today, and she was telling me how she was crying when the ambulance could barely get down the road to pick up the deceased person. It's that bad in places, guys, I'm not exaggerating, take a ride down the road, and it's washing out to the point of, there's a corner, if you don't know what you're doing, you're going to end up in that culvert. It's really, it's real, and the culvert keeps getting filled with, with sand, and we're trying to pull it out, but none of it, and I know it's a private road, and nobody cares, I mean, the town's not going to fix it, I mean, you used to grade it and, and fill potholes, and I think that's all changing, and we've heard multiple different things about that. Sometimes we hear, well, they'll come do the potholes, sometimes we hear, well, they might still grade, and, and I'm unclear, I haven't read the bylaws specifically to see what it says. And I, and I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I'm just saying I'm unclear on that. But, something needs to be done, I don't know if we, can we do something? Before somebody gets hurt, I'm making this right back down.
So, just if I can just give an update, so we heard about this today, and I started speaking to Heather and Becky and Nelson. Nelson actually said tomorrow, they're going to go out and do some major work on removing that upper pipe, that upper, upper problem.
Yeah.
So, that's going to be rectified tomorrow.
Okay.
As you did point out, there is a new builder there, that builder has met with Becky and Nelson, and obviously, Becky's going to be on the whole remediation and concern about anything that's draining into the lake, certainly Becky's going to be on. They're working with Heather on anything on the roadway that may need to be done on the New Boston side. So, there is, you should see progress within the next literally days.
Oh, that would be great.
I think, Michelle, are you the person who, are you the person who called, ma'am? Who, who called?
No, I'm not.
Okay, Cindy, so Cindy, you have my cell number, then. So, what I would just suggest to the board, if you're, if the whole group is okay with this, let's see what the next few days play out with the work that's planned for the next couple of days.
Can I, can I jump in here for a minute?
You've got to come up to the mic.
Part of my issue with this is that we have been at these people since they came in and cleared the land and put all the trees in the swale.
I, I don't, I don't want to interrupt you, but you do have to say your name at the mic, it's not because of, not for us.
We're at it tonight, we're already seeing.
I know, but it's for the, it's for the people.
That was only $28,000 contribution, I don't think it counts for how much those organizations cost us. My name's Cindy Musi. They, when they started doing this project, they came in and clear cut it without permits, and on the land, it wasn't there. And then they dumped all the trees in the swale. So, the drainage problem started right then. We called, we have gotten no action from the beginning. Becky has not enforced a single one of what she was required to enforce. You say it's our private road, I say it's her responsibility that nothing has been done.
Well, ma'am, I, today literally was the first I'm hearing, but I can assure you that I know Heather has been involved in discussion, and Nelson, I spoke with Becky, I got an email, communicated with Becky today about it for the first time. I know that there has been, I've heard the discussion of 53 New Boston having some issues over the past several weeks. So, until today, what I did know is there were some issues over there, I know staff has been reviewing some issues, the fact that there's a new developer, is a contractor, is a good thing.
My thing is, it's not new.
But.[1727.86] But...
This goes back two years. So you just heard about it today, but we've been talking to the bill, the building inspector and, call him, for two years. We've been trying to get somebody to address this. And the only reason we know it's, you know, what would've happened, okay, if we hadn't had all this rain? How many years down the road would we be before we realized it wasn't done correctly?
But we're in the situation we're in now. And so we can, and so the situation we can do now is we have a particular direction to go in, and the only productive thing we can do right now is address it going forward. I, you know, we understand your concerns.
For sure.
We hear ya.
But we've been hearing it too, so I understand where we're coming from.
Do you think there's any, I mean, I don't know if this is a Nelson question, but I understand he's doing stuff. Can they put, 'cause he should've kinda done a berm on that side. Can he put wattles or something down there to...
I mean, we're...
Just say, just say hypothetically, if Hillary dumps a bunch of rain on us Friday, we're really gonna not be able to drive down this road.
He also said, and he said tomorrow they're gonna have wattles put out there with the length of the road tomorrow.
Okay. I mean, just something, which he should've done at the beginning, but this is something to just ease the problem until they can do a major repair. Because...
But I do, you have my contact information. You can share it with everybody, which is fine.
I guess, and then we have a secondary concern, it only came up because of this, is now we understand the town is no longer going to grade our road. That, they never graded our road.
No, that's, I, I can address that.
Okay.
So if you read the private road bylaw, it's very specific, and I, and there is a date when this bylaw was adopted, but I don't know it off the top of my head. So the private road bylaw is very specific. It says that the DPW can only fill potholes for access purposes. And I, I know historically that there used to be grading that was done on the roads.
Well, they filled it with a grader.
I, I, and I, it hasn't happened since I've been here. I've only been here a year. So we've been, we've been following the bylaw because that is what was set in. And I can tell you the reason the bylaw changed is that there was a problem on another private road, that there was grading being done, and the town got sued. I don't think I need to, Mary's gonna shake her head yes. And, um, that was when that stopped, or supposed to stop.
Let me add one thought that you might wanna put into your research, because I don't know what the answer is, but someone else on another lake who's also on a private road mentioned to me that when their sewer was put in, they got sent a document that said no one but the town could grade their roads because of the manholes.
If, if that exists, I'd like to see it, but I don't have that document myself, so...
Nothing that we know of.
He started looking for it. They have started looking for it.
That may be the group that's talking about whether or not the town has a responsibility where the sewer line went in. Remember, I mentioned this to you yesterday, there is a neighborhood group that's trying to assess whether we should be grading it because a sewer line went in. As far as we know, there's absolutely nothing that indicates that we should, there's no exception, if you will, for sewer line.
His road, he, he was adamant, he got sent a piece of paper when they approved their separate system put in, so. I'm just saying, if you're doing research, you might be looking, 'cause it might exist someplace, you know? You know? And his round was, I think we were first, the first part of Sea Lake was first. And this was on, um...
Ken Big Elm?
No, yeah, Big Elm. Um, one of the first parts that went in around Big Elm, so, you know? Which makes it kinda hard if they hire their own grader now, that they're violating their sewer if they're hiring their own grader, you know?
Okay. We do, thank you both.
But again, you know, after our potholes was the trucks, the city trucks would come down, they'd drop the gravel, and they'd spread it with the grader. Most of the time. It was very seldom, guys.
Well, I know, but, I mean, but she, nobody's denying that that perhaps occurred. The point is, is that our, because we got sued, we changed the enforcement around it, and we stuck to the letter of our law to not create additional liability. That's the circumstance we're in, apparently. I know, this is, I'm just hearing this myself, so...
When did that happen? I was just curious.
I, I'm not sure exactly when the bylaw changed, but...
No, when the enforcement changed, 'cause...
Well, it's been, it's been, yeah, it's been here a year, so it's been...
It's been a year, I've been over here just over a year, and when I came, basically, you know, I read the bylaw, and I, and I do believe my predecessor actually had the same, very similar policy, that he did not, he did not grade roads privately.
We were graded last year.
No, you weren't.
Not by the town.
Somebody came...
They, they came and they dr, I said, I said, they spread the gravel with the grader.
No, a grader...
I mean, I know what grader is, my husband's a commissioner...
All right, order, order, order. We're gonna let her answer the question, and then one person talks at a time for the rest of the evening, okay?
We usually place the wa, with the front end loader, and we will scrape the road with the front end loader, but not the grader. The grader has gone out only on town roads, as far as I know.
Well, it's untruth in there, yes, but no. You guys wanna jump in?
It's not, it's not a point of debate. There's not a, she's saying it's been a year, you're saying before it was different, nobody's arguing it.
Okay.
And we understand your point about the culvert.
But I also think that most people in town that live on a gravel road are not aware of this. I mentioned it to the group at, and I think they should be made aware. I mean, I didn't call for potholes, I just figured the town was gonna come down with the grader sooner or later, you know? And a lot of, a lot of the people on dirt roads are thinking that way.
Understood.
We get a lot of calls for potholes, including, including Adams. It's on our list already, so I already know.
Well, but, and staying, going back to the larger point, we appreciate you guys coming here tonight. There will be apparently some form of action undertaken, and if there's not, we invite you to the next meeting, 'cause obviously we can't, you know, we're not police. We can't helicopter.
You're still willing, you're hearing this, so...
Um, anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anybody else wanna be here or not? I appreciate it.
I'm sorry, how does that go?
All right, so we're back to our action items. I can figure out where it is.
Big Elm, yeah, the dock permit.
All right. All right, we're on to, uh, back to the action items. We are on to item D, consideration and possible action on an application for a dock permit for Ronald Peterson at 243 Big Elm St. George. Come on up. But you said, wherever you prefer.
Well, there's a mic.
How you doing?
Good, yourself?
Very well, thank you, so... All right, we're on the dock permit. So what are you, what's...
You didn't lose dad. Where'd dad go?
All right. Oh, yeah, so cute. He's cute. Yeah, very well behaved, Junior. All right.
Practicing for participatory government.
Start 'em early.
Got 'em young.
So, okay, so what's going on?
Um, I replaced the dock that was there. Um, I, I'm new to town, and I don't know, you need permits and all that type of stuff, so here we are.
Okay.
Um, it's out a little farther because that area is all filled with sand, so it's very, very shallow.
So I sent you earlier today the regulations for docks. Um, any, in order to get the permit, there are restrictions on how far out he can go, unless he explains why. In this case, because it had been filled, it forces him to go out a little further because it's shallow.
Yeah.
Um, as you also saw, there was one question about a piece that was over the property line. Mr. Peterson's aware of that as well, and that that would have to just...
Yeah, just change.
Okay.
So you have a little jury?
Yeah.
Why was that filled in with sand?
Howard Pratt did it when apparently there was a marina there. And he kept, apparently he did that in the sixties and seventies. I mean, so it, it was, you know, way before, I, I remember how nice that sand was in the early eighties. Like, it was, like, wow. And now it's all muck now, but, you know, it was beautiful.
All right.
Um, I do have problems with the extension. Um, it's a safety issue for boaters and also swimmers. There are people who swim along and they don't expect to run into a dock that's that far out.
Right, but this is a corner. I don't know if you know exactly where it is.
Yeah, well, it's...
Yeah. Nobody, nobody boats there. You cannot boat where my dock is.
And, you know, regardless of the sand, I mean, when you put the dock in, you knew there was sand there, you should've taken that into account, and you could've still, you know, been within...
Right, but last year, we didn't get the rain, and my boat was sitting on the ground. And that was on the very end of the dock.
Yeah, but I do have a problem with the, um, the length. Plus, you know, it's really, um, it's really not up to the town to grant everything to make it convenient for people. When people put in a dock, they ought to know what the regulations are.
Okay. Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I'm within the two-hundred square feet.
Yeah, but you're, the length isn't...
Yeah, and so I think you're about, what is it, twenty-five is the...
Yeah.
Yeah, so twenty-five is the, what's it?
It's thirty-eight.
Yeah, no, I, it's, so, um, it is over.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, and it's quite a bit over. I mean, it, it's not, you know...
You need to come down and see this area. I mean, you, you, you can walk.
What was the dock that was originally there? How long was the dock?
Uh, that was twenty-twenty, but it was only for a rowboat. Yeah, you couldn't put a boat there.
Yeah, but see, you know, we've had other people with, um, dock requests, that the dock wouldn't fit where it goes, and, you know, we can't make rules for each...
Three of the other neighbors have over twenty-five feet where I am because of where we are. We're in a corner, it's been filled, it's all rocks, we cannot put our boats in there. I already ruined a prop.
If we receive complaints on people doing things illegally, we'll take care of that. But right now, excuse me, we're looking at your permit, you know? And you can have a beautiful home on the lake and not be able to put a boat in, depending on what rocks, what sand, and what distance.
And, and listen, I, I hear ya. It's not, I don't mean it in a, it's, it's, but the problem is, is the rules, the rules, the rules, the rule. The mechanism for us to make, has the harbor master to make an exception. I'm not really sure what that is. We can look if there's some other sort of circumstantial grounds, and you convince us of us, maybe, but I, the time I've been on, it's always been twenty-five feet. And it's just, that's like town-wide, and, you know, you know?
There are exceptions and so on. If I've gotta go to another hearing, we need to bring more information, we need to do that, that's fine.
Should, should we have, I mean, conservation may have a good understanding of what's at the bottom of that lake, if that would make a difference to you.
Um, I don't really think so. It, it's the length.
It's a public, it's a law, it's not a, it's not a impact on, you could build a dock across, and they...
No, I'm just saying, it's the reality of the problem, or the degree of the problem is what I, I was, I didn't know of that.
Yeah, no, I mean, we've had one where, you know, like I said, the, you know, they had no access really, 'cause it was all rocks, so they couldn't have a dock.
Before my dock, there is a tree in the water longer than my dock.
Trees are not our issue unless it's...
Maybe there's no boating where I am, so if you...
Would cut him from it.
I understand the concern, but there is none.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's, my problem isn't concerns or not concerns. My problem is, is just, it's what it, it says, it's what it says, it's what it says. And I don't see how we can issue a permit.
Then we have to get a bearing or something, whatever have to do. Another meeting, I don't care what it is, but there needs to be some more, you know, information.
You have to cut, you have to cut the length back. You're pre, you know, pack on the other side of it.
Well, it's...
Because, um, the picture here shows that it actually, your boat, it's docked there. I assume that's the dock.
You have a picture?
That is the photograph that a neighbor had sent in. I mentioned a concern about the boat being in front of...
Yeah, yeah.
So the boat, as it is, is in front of their property. You could still cut your dock back and have your boat on the other side.
Yeah, that, that's what the plan was.
May I ask?
Yeah, Mary, of course.
Um, so the reason, the previous dock was thirty feet, correct? It said, "Area where dock was filled in with sand forty-plus years ago. Area is very shallow for boat. Reason for length replaced previous dock of thirty feet."
Right.
So that thirty-foot dock, that was, hold on. That was already five, um, feet over, but was that approved?
I don't know.
Because, you know, at this point, I almost feel like that thirty-foot dock, you know, was probably, you know, at some point, we must've, a different board must've approved it to at least go five feet beyond.
Not necessarily.
Well, how do we know? I've never received any complaint. I mean, I don't, I mean, since I've been sitting here, we've never gotten any complaint about the thirty-foot.
And if that neighbor you got to complain with is a very, very unreasonable person, and she's taken me on, and now the whole area is suing.
Well, we're not discussing personalities, we're discussing...
No, I think, I think, but I think what Ms. Dowling is saying is there had not been a prior complaint.
She's just gone everything she can to cause problems with me and my neighbor.
That I'm saying...
That dock that was there previously, you said was how old?
I don't have any idea.
Well, I would be...
The gentleman died, I don't...
I would be willing to bet you that that was put in before we had the dock.
Right, so what I'm, exactly my point. So, um, to me, I feel like the thirty-foot dock was grandfathered in in a similar way to when zoning is grandfathered in and we changed the zoning. So if that dock of thirty feet was in before we had our twenty-five-foot, um, requirement, I think the homeowner has a right to, and at least replace it with a thirty-foot dock.
I'm not, Mary, I don't think that's, that's...
Well, it's only...
We're jumping, we're jumping a lot.
Well, no, we're not, because it, it's twenty, no, because we're holding him to twenty-five feet. And what I'm trying to say is, I'm not gonna hold him to twenty-five feet when there's another dock there that was thirty feet, that could very well have predated our requirements. So it is on, it was on point.
And the bylaw does allow for you to make an exception if you believe that there is justification. So it does provide some measure of...
But that, to some extenuating circumstances.
But that dock, I would be willing to bet again, was never permitted, like a lot of them.
Can you demonstrate to us somehow what the length of the dock was when you cut it? Is there like a picture or...
No, I don't have anything.
I was gonna say, how do we know that it was thirty feet?
It was literally like this far off, it was in the water, it was just junk, it was garbage.
We might have an air, I mean, the only thing I think is if we could get an old GIS, you might be able to get an old aerial shot.
You probably could see it on even Google Earth.
On Google, if an old Google Earth image, we probably could see it. When did you pull out the other, the old one?
Last year.
Last year. So if we have an old Google Earth, we might be able to get a sense of the length of it on a Google Earth to find out what it, how long it was.
And, and the gentleman, he only had a rowboat there. He literally had a rowboat there, that was it.
Because, I mean, where I'm coming from, is we do have some discretion with extenuating circumstances. I'd like to see them be able to put a boat in, but at the same time, as I think our chair pointed out, now it's twenty-five feet, and this is thirty-eight. So I'm trying to see, you know, would it benefit to go to that thirty-foot again? Because thirty-eight is thirteen feet over, that's almost ha, that's fifty percent more than what we allow, right? We allow twenty-five feet, and it's thirteen feet over, which is about fifty percent more, which is a significant length, you know? And I just, I'm gonna, I'm having a problem with that aspect of it. If it was, you know, a few feet out, then I think we gotta exercise some leeway.
No, thirteen feet is way too far, too far. No, 13 feet is, is way too far, too far.
You could, um, you know, you could just redesign this and put the boat on the other side of the dock, you know, cut back your length and put the...
Yeah, yeah, the boat is already, that's already been, yeah. Yeah, the boat will go to the other side, absolutely has to, yeah.
The water's high, two inches, it's normal.
You can't help that.
I, I understand, but I'm looking for a variance for this.
Yeah, it fits.
I'm not being unreasonable. I also look past and look at it, you know what I mean? So you understand it's, it's shallow, it's not, you know, a variance on a regular, on a lake. It's the area basically where the picture just dropped. It's very shallow.
But there's a lot of other places on the lake that are shallow and everything and people don't have docks for the very reason.
This is the shallowest part of the lake.
Have you been in this house for 38?
Excuse me?
How long have you been on the lake, you said?
I moved onto that lake in 81.
Okay, so sit, sit, have you been on this property since 81?
I was four.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was four property.
Oh, okay, because I was going to say, I'm, I'm still wanting to know how long this other dock was there.
I swam over to where I am to link the kids.
Um, well, how does the board want to proceed?
Well, I personally won't approve the permit for the 38.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm in agreement with that. Um, Mary, what do you think?
I think we have some leeway to, to go further than the 25 feet. I think that's a little excessive. I mean, I'm, I would do a site visit if it helped, but I mean, you know, yeah. The problem is, if we go 50% from there, and that's a big lake, we're going to have a lot of people coming forward with a similar kind of...
With the 5 feet, just to, because you, you use 30 as a number.
I'm okay with 5 feet.
I mean, I don't know how much further out you need to go to get some...
I don't know.
I added 30 last year and I added another 10.
We, I get it, it's just the problem is, is there is, it's just once we start going down this road, is...
And I'm not even parking it on the side.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not questioning your, your point, but I'm just saying from my perspective, it is, it is, you know, there's a rule, it's a pretty bright line rule.
Yeah, but there, there's also, you know, fair...
Suggestion or is it...
I understand where you're coming from, but you need more information, I understand.
We need more information that would fit with the regulations.
You're never going to approve, I can't, okay?
I never said that.
Hey, there's no, it's not productive to be challenging here tonight.
I want the right length. You've got the right area, you need the right length.
All right, well, I, I think we'll, we will talk, talk to Robin, please, about, uh, I think I'm the one to go out and people around, we can chat.
I'm willing to go look at it, you know?
We'll probably have to arrange everything so I don't just come jumping.
He gives it in the late...
So, Robin, can you please follow me?
Upward, mate.
Thank you so much.
Who would like to, would, would you all like to go out or...
We can talk, we can talk.
You can individually let me know if you want to go and I'll connect with you.
Perfect.
Then we can see.
All right, my friend, appreciate you and, uh, make sure your security gets out of here, okay?
Do we need a motion to, to table that?
You could just put it, we'll put it back, we'll put it on the agenda.
Let's put it back.
Yeah.
All right, I think we're back to you, Heather.
You're awfully energetic for 20 minutes of nine.
No, I'm normally...
Yes, it's great, but yeah, a little challenging.
Yeah.
So it is a considerable amount of our Chapter 90 money that we have, but they are some of our most deteriorated roads, so that's why we are targeting them now. You need something?
Do you have a number, do you need to read it?
No, I don't need to read it. You don't need me to read the memo, right? I told you the roads, right? Budmine, Shepherd's Place, including Laurel Hill and Orchard and, um, Putnam. I always want to say Podunk and I get myself in trouble, which is not where I'm at that one, so Putnam. So, um, there is paperwork, um, it's a little different than what you're probably used to seeing in the past because the state has a new process where I have to go online and fill the paperwork online and print it and then you guys, somebody has to be authorized to sign it and then I have to scan it and send it to them signed, which is kind of silly. But soon as we get that in, then I have to get the process of getting the bids out. Can't put it out to bid until they're approved, so kind of hold and got to get the approvals into them so that they can approve it, so. What we're still hoping in what we put in the bid is that we would like one of the areas to be done before winter, but we're losing time, so seems like it's not coming, but it is, so.
All right, questions?
Any questions?
Also, I'll make a motion for the use of Chapter 90 funds for the annual paving program. The amount's as presented by the PPW director. Second it.
All those in favor? All right, um, all right.
Yeah, whenever, yeah.
You guys want to sign right now or...
Um, whatever you want to do, Michelle, I can multi-desk.
I'm going to get rid of her.
Do I need my one last little item?
Yeah, go ahead, you can go ahead.
No, we, that, actually, that, that last item didn't even need to go on, that's just a grant.
Oh.
I can sign that, you don't even have to worry about it.
So, as long as you're good, then I can go.
The board's not going to mind if I say, yes, we're going to take the grant that's given to us.
Yeah, basically the state wants to give us a grant for another board and...
It would be the contract for it if we were buying it, that would have to go. But it came in Friday and I wasn't here, so, yeah, that's fine. We don't even have to worry about it. That gets Heather off the hook for item M.
So, just quickly, that, that Ford grant, just so you know, it comes in two parts. We're getting a, a new sign, a new electronic sign speed board like we have, so much of what we have. Um, and then we'll have another memorandum of understanding that they're going to come out and actually evaluate New Boston Road and Warren Road, which is good because you guys, everybody knows that those roads can be a little bit hairy speedwise. So they're looking to do lane departure errors, trying to recorrect them with signage, especially on turny roads. So they'll also supply the signs and they'll help us with long-term plans on how potentially to make the roads safer, which is...
This is actually really good.
Which, yeah, it's like some free engineering from a, like, layout and where signage and then they provide the signs and then they come, they also like, even if it's something they can't do in their scope, they'll tell us, like, if you ever redo this road, you might want to change this pitch or this layout or...
This is actually a happy DOT story.
Yeah.
This is actually DOT actually providing some services back to the town.
It sounds like, it sounds more like the legislature created a program.
DOT, yeah.
It's something, it's not a legislature thing, but whatever.
We'll be happy.
Okay, thanks, Heather, for all your work tonight.
Thank you, Heather.
Um, action item F, consideration and possible action on a transient vendor application for David Brockman at the Sturridge Host Hotel on September 3rd to 2023, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and September 4th, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Do we have any questions, thoughts, concerns?
No.
The text, the show, right?
Yeah. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion then to approve the transient vendor license for Mr. Brockman at the Sturridge Host Hotel on September 3rd, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and September 4th, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, second, uh, motion, all those in favor? Okay, the ayes have it. All right, um, action item G, consideration and possible action to accept the letter of resignation from Tricia Towns, full-time dispatcher, effective September 14th, 2023. I'm just going to make a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Tricia Towns, full-time dispatcher, effective September 14th, 2023, with our thanks.
Second.
All those in favor? All right.
Sad to see her go.
Former student.
All right. She's, uh, again, onto action item H, consideration and possible action to accept the letter of resignation from Trevor Breeze, full-time dispatcher, effective August 24th, 2023.
Did you say that as a motion?
No, I didn't, actually.
Okay.
I will make, I'll make a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Trevor Breeze, full-time dispatcher, effective August 24th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Again, with deep regret.
With deep regret, and I apologize. Um, I, uh, consideration and possible action to accept two donations to the Sturridge Police Department. The first donation is from Baba Sushi in the amount of $243 and the second donation is from CCS Property Management LLC in the amount of $300. The donation will offset the costs, costs of the police department youth initiatives.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the donations from Baba Sushi in the amount of $243 and the second donation from CC Property Management LLC in the amount of $300. The donations will offset the costs of the police department youth initiatives. I'll second it.
All those in favor? All right, the ayes have it. Okay, um, consideration and possible action to accept the resignation of Constantine Ekanamos has part-time custodian effective August 15th, 2023. So moved.
Second.
All right, on, and all those in favor? The ayes have it.
Hey, do we get a copy of the letter?
He didn't provide one. He didn't provide a letter.
Oh.
Okay, on to action item K.
Is it verbal? Yes.
Um, we are, uh, moving on to the appointment of Chase Walker as part-time custodian for 12 hours per week at the hourly rate of $1,835, effective upon successful employment screening.
If I could just jump in on K and L, uh, Robin spoke with me about some reallocation of hours, so it had been, um, I think it was 16 and 8 and for hiring purposes, as well as to be able to better delineate the, the responsibilities, uh, we felt a 12 and 12 worked better. So that's why there's a change in some of these hours in case anybody asks or cares or wants to know why.
Does the money work out the same?
Same financial, yep, it's the exact same number of hours, just allocated evenly amongst, uh, between the two employees.
I'll make a motion for the appointment of Chase Walker as part-time custodian for 12 hours per week at the hourly rate of $18.35, effective upon successful employment screening.
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Hurry, I?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Brian Narum as part-time custodian for 12 hours per week at the hourly rate of $18.35, effective upon successful employment screening.
Second.
Okay, Mary Lou seconded. All those in favor?
Don't worry, I'm not used to you seconding.
I was just, didn't see anybody look at me, so I did it. Um, all right, all those in favor? The ayes have it.